Yes, sir, Mayor and Council, good morning. Thank you, first of all, for allowing me this opportunity to present a high-level, brief summary update on the investments and resources for the Houston Fire Department. I routinely make this presentation to the Public Safety and Homeland Security Committee meeting chaired by Councilmember Cayman, but I do appreciate the opportunity to speak directly to council and to our public directly. But before I begin, Mayor, let me just say this. I want to thank you for your commitment and your support in addressing decades-long challenges that we face when we accept the responsibility for this responsibility. It's with your leadership, the support of this council, the support of the taxpayers, and the incredible work of the men and women of the Houston Fire Department that we've been able to meet those challenges and make great strides in that respect. We still have some challenges that we're dealing with, and certainly, there's an urgency to the work that we're doing. But I want to make clear that, in spite of any narrative to the contrary, over the last seven years, there have been significant investments made in the Houston Fire Department that have helped us deliver service to our community and to our firefighters. So it is with gratitude that I want to present this summary. Next slide, please. And I'll do this in three parts. We'll talk about recruitment and retention. We'll talk about the year-over-year budget allocations, and we'll discuss the health and safety in equipment that has the investments in those areas. But before I begin, I do want to brag on the department and the city for a little bit. The Houston Fire Department has achieved, and they've maintained, certain important designations in the industry and that are also important for our community. First is, in 2022, the City of Houston and the Houston Fire Department attained an ISO Class 1 Public Protection Classification. That's from the Insurance Services Office. They rate the community's water distribution system, the fire department's equipment and manpower, the fire alarm systems, and other aspects, and they give a rating from 1 to 10, 1 being the best, 10 being no protection. The City of Houston and the Houston Fire Department achieved a Class 1 Public Protection Classification, which is huge for our community. The second thing is that the Fire Department is also an accredited agency, and an agency receives accreditation after a peer review of the accreditation documents. They have an onsite visit from peer assessors, and they do a public hearing before the commission before they are accepted as an accredited agency. We are one of 117 fire departments across the U.S. and Canada that have both of these designations. So that's an incredible achievement. I'm very proud of those achievements because it represents the commitment from the city and the work of the men and women of the Houston Fire Department. So I wanted to present that up front before we get into the summary. As I mentioned, next slide, please. As I mentioned, we're still facing some challenges. At top of mind is the increase in service demand that we're seeing year over year. But just as pressing is the recruitment and retention aspect. As a matter of fact, recruitment and retention is the biggest challenge faced by the American Fire Service across the nation, and we're having the same issues. For us, each year, approximately 24% of our workforce is eligible for retirement. Our normal attrition is about 170 firefighters per year. We've been averaging that year over year, except for 2017 and 2019, where we had higher-than-normal attrition. Currently, our department headcount is 3,894. That's with 3,675 classified personnel. We have 95 cadets in the class right now and 124 civilian personnel. Our optimal staffing for classified people is 3,845, which puts us about 270 firefighters short of our optimal at this moment. We fell behind in 2019 and 2020. In 2019, we had to cancel four academy classes after passing Proposition B, which made us miss our recruitment target by 280 that year. In 2020, the response to the pandemic made it challenging to recruit and train firefighters. So there was almost a 20-month period where we were off track before we were able to graduate our first class. But every year, Mayor, you and this council have approved the resources to address those issues. You all have approved recruiting and hiring 350 cadets per year. You all have... So that's 100 recruits above the normal attrition to try to make up for what was lost in 2019. Additionally, you all have approved, and Mayor, you approved this about two years ago, the first pay raise for cadets in over 20 years. In addition to that, you've allotted a $5,000 incentive pay for cadets, which is helping in the recruitment effort. So a cadet now makes $40,000 while they're in training. Year one, when they graduate, they jump to 52 as a base pay from there. In addition, an 18% pay raise for all firefighters was approved, and the last implementation, the last 6% was implemented this fiscal year. So the full effect is in place this year. Next slide, please. In terms of our budget, the Fire Department has seen an increase of nearly 25% over the last six years. The increase has been supplemented by grants and other non-traditional funding sources that we've pursued. In each one of those cases, on top of the budget allocation, you all have approved the grant match allocations that we need for these grants, which have helped us provide seed money for health and safety equipment primarily for our firefighters. That being the exhaust systems that we've implemented at every one of our fire stations, the gear washers, the public or personal protective equipment, the additional equipment that we've purchased. And this year, which is a huge achievement, is we have cancer screenings and physicals for all our firefighters free of charge through a grant and the match that was provided, Mayor approved through your office. So those are going to go a long way towards addressing the primary concern, which is the safety and health of our firefighters, specifically the cancer reduction initiatives. Next slide, please. So in terms of equipment, Mayor, this administration has invested more taxpayer dollar into the Fire Department at one time than any other administration in recent history. We've, especially with the fact that everything that we buy is so expensive. Each one of our fire trucks is about $600,000. Our aerial trucks are running between $1.4 to $1.7 million. But despite those heavy costs, the investments that have been made by this administration, this council have been incredible. This is a high-level summary of those investments. Since 2017, over $155 million have been invested into the department. Some of those things have enabled us to protect not only our residents, but our firefighters as well. Of course, this is not the entire list. There are thousands of other items that we've purchased in support of our mission. But this council member represents, I think, the commitment, not only from the council, but each one of you have reached out to me and offered your council district funds to support the needs of the Fire Department. So that support and that commitment to the Fire Department and the safety of this community has been incredible. And finally, Mayor, let me just say that, as your fire chief, I think it has been important for me to maintain the trust that you guys have bestowed on me and this community has bestowed on me. And we try to make proper decisions, proper planning, and be responsible stewards of the taxpayers' money. I think they deserve that. Very proud of the work that we've done over these last seven years, very proud of the ability to maintain relationships and be able to give our firefighters and this community the service that they demand. So with that, Mayor, I want to thank the men and women of the Houston Fire Department. Without them, they do incredible work each and every day, and very proud of the work that they're doing. Despite the number of natural disasters, the pandemic, and some very challenging environment, they've always stepped up, and I think that's the story, the stories of the city and the department, rising up to meet those challenges. So I want to thank you all. I want to thank the council, and I want to thank you for your commitment for the safety of everybody in this community.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Penya. Let me thank you again for just incredible leadership over the last six and a half years and your command team. I want to thank them for their service, for their work, and each and every one of the firefighters that's out there protecting our city and the people and the visitors who come to our city every day. So that's very appreciative. Also want to acknowledge the work that you all have done for the accreditation and the honors, and I'm glad you started off with that because that speaks to every single person in the Fire Department, every single person that has helped to make that happen, and it benefits the city as a whole. So I certainly want to acknowledge that. I don't want to pass over too quickly with respect to what has been invested and put into the Fire Department. If you go back to the slide dealing with the budget... Because it is important to note that from fiscal year 2018, where the budget was at $481,000 for the Fire Department, for fiscal year 2024, the budget is now $593 million. And that is a significant substantial increase from where it started, and that's based on the needs that existed within the Fire Department itself. So I certainly want to thank the members of City Council for putting the additional dollars into the Fire Department. That's critically important. And then if you go to the next slide. And then I want to highlight the $155 million investment that has been made. Now, almost all of those decisions are based on what you and your team have brought to us and said that was needed. I know when I came in nearly eight years ago, a lot of the trucks were just breaking down. But in the last seven years, as noted, we have replaced over 50% of the fleet, and I think that's critically important. And the health and safety of the firefighters is critically important, and we try to address that. There's still more to be done.
Sure.
I certainly want to highlight and note that, but whether it's to the hazmat units, all of the other things that are listed there. I want to thank you for bringing it to our attention, and as much as possible, we've tried to respond. But I can't thank you enough. As I've said to many people many times, you are steady as she goes. You know, I don't think I've ever seen you go up, and I've never seen you go low. Ever since I've come to know you, you've just been steady as she goes, and that has benefited the department, but it's benefited the city as well, and I think it is reflected in the accolades and the tributes that you and the other staff in the Fire Department has received from across the country. So thank you for your incredible service.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And if I may, I just want to make an additional point or stress the fact that the budget represents our adopted budget. But you know, I'm always at your office asking for additional funding for things beyond the budget, and very rarely do I get a flat-out no on those requests. So again, these $155 million is on the low end of the estimate because the commitment that you've made, to me, certainly was that we were going to address the fleet, the health and safety of our firefighters, and to try to address the service demand increase. You made that commitment to me when I accepted this responsibility, and I think that certainly this administration, this council has lived up to that. The additional hazmat unit, first one that we've put in place in over two decades. We've added five peak-time ambulances on top of the normal demand, and those investments, those commitments are huge. Everything else that's listed here, Mayor, goes directly to the health and safety of our firefighters, and that's an important piece, and that's something that I'm very grateful for because we need to take care of them. They're the ones that are the boots on the ground, and without them, we can't run an efficient department.
Thanks very much. Vice Mayor Pro Tem Cash Tatum.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the time that we're spending today on this update because week after week, we approve these items in pieces. But to see it all comprehensively speaks volumes, not to mention, you know, our budget is a reflection of our priorities, and we know that public safety is our number-one priority. And I think that as a council and a city, we need to continue to tell the good story of what we are doing as a city for our Fire Department. I know that, you know, we face some challenges, and there are a lot of stories being told about Houston and the Fire Department, but we need to do a better job of telling our real story about Houston and the Fire Department because what we have done collectively as a council in this administration is extraordinary. And we've talked to fire departments across the state, and when people see what we do in Houston, I mean, even the donating of our equipment to other cities when we no longer use it, the amount of investments that we've made in our cadets, the amount of investment that we've made in our fleet, and making sure our firefighters have safety equipment, it's a good story, and people need to know about what we're doing week after week. And so I appreciate you coming and giving the update to us, and I look forward to receiving this document so that we can share it and put it in our newsletters so that people can see a comprehensive look at what we are doing in efforts for keeping people in Houston safe. So Chief Penya, you have done a yeoman's job as our chief. We have depended on you specifically in District K when we've had issues and constituents were concerned about things happening in the community. You were there, standing beside me and standing up for the City of Houston and making sure citizens felt safe in our community. So I appreciate all that you have done, and we look forward to continuing the work to keep our city safe.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Cisneros.
Thank you. I want to begin by thanking the men and women of the Houston Fire Department, and thank you, Chief, for your exemplary leadership. You are not just a leader of the department, you are a recognized leader of the city. People see you, and they know that you are leading Houston also, and I appreciate how available you've made yourself to be out in the public, and people are always glad to see you and assured by your presence. Thank you, Mayor, for the major and very impressive investments you've made in the Fire Department to desperately, I mean, to meet the desperate needs that improve the lives and safety of our firefighters. I hope that in the future, that when so many new council members will be sitting here, that there will be opportunities for them to go through the firefighter 101 class that was offered. I don't know if you still do that, but I went through that, and it was eye-opening to me to get to go through just a sample of the training and the experiences that firefighters go through to experience a real fire, to see what it's like to, with a dummy, you know, to someone maybe who's had a drug overdose, you know, to go walk through smoke and be carrying heavy equipment and you can't see. Those are all really eye-opening experiences. And another thing that really helped give me some insight into your department and the work that's done is the opportunity to ride along with firefighters and to visit the stations and to talk with them and really hear and understand. So I appreciate, you know, all of that, and just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I appreciate the acknowledgement, but really, the work is done by the men and women of the department. I got some of my command staff sitting back here, Chief Walker, Captain Pickney, I think Chief Spottas back there working the controls. And then I have the rest of them. Mayor, we're doing collective bargaining right now, so the rest of the command staff is out there trying to secure a contract for firefighters as well. But it's them that are doing the work.
That's all true, but leadership matters, and you are a recognized leader within your department and within the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thomas.
Good morning. Chief Penya, you know, you're one of my favorite directors.
Did it?
I said that to everybody. No, I'm just playing. But I want to thank you. The record of our investment, the proof is in the pudding, but I really want to thank you and all of the stations for their willingness to partner with council members for all types of activations and public safety events. Houston Fire, we've canvassed together 400 homes this summer in the middle of the heat to educate residents about fireworks, smoke safety, fire safety. So thank you for that. Every time we pop up at a station, we're always greeted well. The partnership is there, and as you mentioned, with our council district service funds, being able to directly, to direct funds to improve public safety there so they can be more efficient with their work has been a great opportunity, I know particularly in District F. So just thank you for that, and then thank you for every, you know, shift commander, everyone that's on the ground that's willing to partner with council offices, and also the community at the same time. So thank you so much for bringing this forward.
They do great work. Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember, Councilmember Cayman.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Chief, within, I think, three weeks of our term, we had the Watson Plant Explosion, if you remember. So as a new Chair of Public Safety and Homeland Security, working also with Councilmember Alcorn and Councilmember Peck, very quickly, we got to know who you are. And Mayor, as you said, I think, steady and intentional and very focused is exactly what you have been in carrying us through, whether it's, you know, the work we did around Watson and protecting neighborhoods, and you were instrumental in that, and the additional hazmat unit, but also the things that you don't always see but you present on. For example, the focus on diversity, bringing more into the fold within the department, the emphasis on recruiting despite all its challenges, water response, so looking behind about how we can improve what you've done in terms of training, but also increasing equipment and partnering with our offices, whether it's high-water rescue vehicles or the programmatic shifts to make sure we are able to respond to any type of disaster, whether it's extreme heat and, you know, the wildland division I always talk about, and now we're moving towards controlled burns and the work there, and we're supporting not just the City of Houston, but our state and the country, and sometimes even beyond the borders of our own country. We have on this agenda, you know, the example, we're doing additional funding for exhaust removal systems, but the focus on firefighter safety and health, the ability as council members to work with our individual stations, whether it's something that they want to do, like a mural that we're supporting or funding, lighting and, you know, pipes and plumbing at the station to help them out, or the projects and programs that they're doing. But as much as you're looking at where we have to move ahead based on prior years, and I believe you said, but correct me if I'm wrong, related to the pay increases, we hadn't seen a pay increase prior to that in how many years?
Well, by the time this was implemented, it was almost 20 years since the cadets had had a pay raise.
Right.
And you approved a 25% pay raise in that aspect.
Right. So moving and addressing that, but also looking ahead, and you have been a staunch advocate and partner in advocating for the needs for additional funding, especially when it comes to technology. And I'll just say it one last time while you're up here, our computer-aided dispatch system.
Absolutely.
And I know that that's in the works, and Mayor, thank you for your support on that, but you have been a staunch advocate, looking every which way for how we can not only support the department and its women and men, but the City of Houston from a safety perspective as well. So it has been an absolute pleasure and privilege to serve with you. I will encourage either the public or others in offices to review the additional presentation that you did bring to public safety because there's so much more information in there about what we have done the past four years.
It's been incredible.
I'm very appreciative and have the utmost respect for you and your team.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Gagio.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, seven years ago, I was there in that room when the mayor was making his announcement as to who is going to be the next police chief. And back then, as you know, there was a lot of issues in regards to funding and morale and what have you in the Houston Fire Department, and here we are today. You're reporting all these great things that have happened, and thank you, Mayor, for choosing Chief Penya because he has been able to lead this department and move it forward. You know, it's disheartening when you're out there, you know, in public, and people claim that we're not doing anything in regards to the Fire Department or the Police Department or public safety, and this is showing that that's not the case. You know, we have done a lot in seven years, and of course, it's to your leadership, it's to your staff, it's to the firefighters out there as well. So thank you for everyone that made this possible. And again, thank you, Mayor, for choosing Chief Penya as the chief for the City of Houston.
Thank you, Councilmember, for your support as well. You know, anytime we need anything for the fire stations in your district, I don't even have to call. You're the one that's reaching out, so I appreciate that and everything that you and your office and the rest of the council members are doing for the Fire Department.
Mayor Pro Tem Martin.
Chief, I echo everyone's statements, but my favorite Penya is not you, it's Carolina Penya.
Makes two of us.
She is the brains of the operation in the Penya family, but you do a phenomenal job. You know, the last couple of weeks, you know, we're in the middle of the silly season, and a lot of things being said out there that are just not true and fabrications. I wonder if anybody knows that the collective bargaining process began on Monday for the City of Houston and firefighters. I haven't seen it anywhere, even though it's public notice, I haven't seen it picked up by anyone. I haven't heard anyone talk about the reduction in pension debt of 75%. While a lot of good things that we just heard, pension debt reduction of 75% since 2016, and when we leave, this council body will look differently on January 1st, there is a fund balance that we're required to keep 7.5, and we're at 19%. So all cities are judged by, number one, their cash on hand and their debt. Debt reduction 75%. Fund balance from 7.5% to 18%, 19%. And the credit rating agencies are in love with the financial position of the City of Houston, but you wouldn't believe that if you hear the rhetoric. The third thing I'd like to reference is, since FY 2018, we have increased the Fire Department's budget by almost 25%. Since 2018, the Fire Department's budget has been increased by almost 25%. My last comment comes from this report that everybody seems to be referencing, the infamous PFM report, where we're hearing many people talk about implement the cost-cutting initiatives of the PFM report. These are coming from people who probably haven't read it. I dusted it off, and I read it again, probably for about the 10th time, because in 2017, when we had this presentation from David Eichenthal from PFM, 10 council members were not here at that time. Seven of us were here. But the PFM's number-one recommendation, and let me read it to you so that everybody is perfectly clear on this, because your headcount of 3,894 increasing up to roughly 4,200, the PFM report that everybody seems to be referencing starts with this. Compared to other major cities, the Houston Police Department has one of the lowest rates of FTEs per capita. Based on 2015 FBI data, Houston has 289.1 police FTEs per 100,000 capita, higher than Austin and San Antonio, but trailing every other major U.S. city. Now, let me read you the statement they made on cost-cutting initiatives that no one seems to be talking about. On the other hand, the Houston Fire Department, based on data from benchmarking city budgets, has one of the highest rates per FTE per capita. At 18.9 FTE per 10,000 residents, Houston is second behind New York. Houston has more FTEs per capita than Chicago, Dallas, Philadelphia, Austin, San Antonio, and Los Angeles. If Houston had the same number of FTEs per capita as Philadelphia, it would reduce headcount by nearly 600. Let me repeat that. If Houston had the same number of fire FTEs per capita as Philadelphia, it would reduce headcount by nearly 600. So while candidates and people running for office are out there spouting implementation of the FTE recommendations, I warn you, based upon your comments... of the FTE recommendations, I warn you, based upon your comments, that that probably would go counter to what we're hearing in the city of Houston. So be careful when you reference a report that you've never read. Be careful when you reference a report that probably doesn't give us the right information. I trust you more than FTE. And I think I was the one who actually made the commission to the mayor at that time, before we implemented in 17, to implement, not to implement, to have a firm come in and look at the analyzation of our expenditures. So I just wanted to get that out, because you're hearing a lot of things from a lot of people that quite frankly aren't true. So if you listen to Chief Penya, he needs approximately 270 more firefighters to make sure that we're protected. If you listen to a consultant and report that everybody seems to be glowing about, you would eliminate 600 firefighter positions in the city of Houston.
Well, Mayor Pro Tim, thank you for your comments, and first of all, thank you for your support of the department and especially in your district. And I agree with you, there's a lot of misinformation out there as far as what the status of the department is in terms of personnel. There are areas where we can make more efficiencies, and look, it's incumbent on us. We're the second-largest draw on your general fund, and it really, I believe the taxpayer wants us to deliver an efficient and effective fire protection service, and in doing that, we have to find ways to be more efficient in how we deliver that service, and that includes appropriate use of our personnel and proper staffing. So thank you for your comments, and I appreciate your support.
And I have complete and total faith in you, sir. I think you're amazing.
Thank you, Chief Penya. I appreciate the update and giving us what we have done and where we are when it comes to facilities, equipment, health, overall pay. So I want to, again, I want to thank you, as Councilmember Gago says, seven years, incredible leadership, the command staff, and all of the firefighters. Your service is very much appreciated. I do agree with Councilmember Sisneros, leadership does matter, okay? Leadership does matter, and the tone that's set is often set at the top. And you've done that, and as a result, the city as a whole has benefited, and quite frankly, the department has benefited quite a bit. So you have not hesitated to come to me, and you've not hesitated to ask. And so I want to thank you for just being representative of the Fire Department and the men and women that served there. Now, Councilmember Plummer, and then we will...
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you for all that you do and all that, all the men and women of the Fire Department do as well to protect our city. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman.
Take care of our city.
Thank you.
And thank you for being a person of faith, because you are certainly a person of faith, and God has held you and kept you steady, and as a result, the cruise ship continues to move forward. So let us join in thanking the chief for some incredible service.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you, thank you, thank you.